This will be our last work session.
And then what Thursday?
At 5:30 in the chamber in City Hall because we are moving in April to same day of the month, second Tuesday, but we will be having a lunch work session. So we will be breaking bread on Dougherty Street, 120 Dougherty Street. So those who've been around the block a while might remember that we met there for many moons and we moved here because we wanted to be able to televise these and have folks have that kind of access. But by heavens, we have moved forward technologically in this fine organization. And so now we can tape and broadcast from Dougherty Street. And so you can still tune on to YouTube and we have those fancy owl machines that some of you may be familiar with from our committee meetings and we'll be employing those. So we will see you second Tuesday of April noon at 120 Dougherty Street if you want to come visit with us, which we welcome you to do, or you can flip on YouTube and still enjoy that meeting.
Now, breaking bread doesn't mean for lunch. That doesn't mean we're also going to do it for dinner though, correct?
No, we were going to be a single.
That's good.
Single meal gathering space.
Starting earlier doesn't mean going longer.
We do not want to linger. We don't even want to linger into afternoon coffee. And I do my afternoon coffee usually about three o'clock. So that's what I'm talking about.
Sorry.
Tonight, though, we have four items on the agenda and three of those are going to involve HCD Director Melinda Lord, Assistant Director, she's been Melinda Lord, speaking to us about our FY25 Annual Action Plan for home funding recommendations, our FY25 Community Partnership Program, which is a newly launched program, and our funding recommendations for CDBG for FY25. And then we are going to cap relatively early tonight with TSPLOST 2023 Project 30 around traffic safety for which we have Derek Doster and some folks from Transportation and Public Works. So before I turn it over to Melinda Lord, anything else to note, Manager Williams?
No, sir.
All right. Well, Melinda, I do feel like you have prepared for speedy evening tonight. I just feel it in you.
Absolutely.
And so I'm going to turn it over to you for the first of three presentations, this one on our home funding recommendations.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. First presentation is going to be for FY25 Home Investment Partnerships Program, also known as HOME. Purpose is to review our con plan, explain the home application review process, go through the home funding and application release, look at the home proposals and funding recommendations, and then review the final remaining AAP5 Annual Action Plan 5 schedule. The HUD Required Consolidated Plan is a five-year needs assessment, resource review and gaps analysis, and a tool for making data-driven place-based investments in the community by use of community consultation and resident participation. HCD is currently operating within its Annual Action Plan 4, which is FY24, and tonight's proposals are for the Annual Action Plan 5, which allows for activities within the six approved consolidated plan goals. And this is the final Annual Action Plan for the FY21 through FY25 Consolidated Plan. The only con plan goal applicable to home projects is the number one goal, affordable housing, which allows for safe, stable, and affordable housing, expanded, and suitable living environments. Eligible home activities include homeowner, single-family development, down payment assistance, rental development for multifamily or single-family, and community housing development organization projects. And currently Athens Land Trust is the only certified CHODO in Athens. One of the important caveats for CHODO is that 50% of HCD's annual home budget must be set aside for our local CHODO to carry out activities. Home funding is gap financing. It does require a regulatory match, which has been reduced this year by HUD to 12.5% from normal 25%. It applies an annual income limit, an annual rent limit, a homeownership value limit, and all of the home units are subject to an affordability period, which is determined by the actual subsidy of home funds put into a project. The application review process this year took account of six different application categories, and there was a potential to score 100 points for these six specific categories. But there's also very specific regulatory criteria beyond just a total point system. There has to be an underwriting and a subsidy layering analysis done for every application that is received. This is to ensure that funding is appropriate and that no project is oversubsidized based on regulatory standards. Again, home is gap financing. It's not meant to finance 100% of any project. It's meant to fill in the gap of funding deficiency. And finally, all home applications or all approved home projects must undergo an environmental review that must be completed and approved prior to any funds, home funds actually being committed through contract execution. The HUD CPD formula allocation for FY2024 has not been announced yet. Congress has not allocated annual funding to HUD. Therefore, the announcement has not been made. As a result, for HOME, we did not include anticipated FY25 home funding in this application process. We included funding that we had that had not been expended from '22, '23, and '24. And HUD, our home funding availability as a result of those funding combinations, we have 1,930,103 available. 10% of that is allocated to HCD for planning and administrative oversight activities. The remaining, as spoken about, the CHODO set aside is 127,891. And then they also, we have a CHODO operations, which is 5%, which could be 20, up to $20,000 for those activities. The remaining balance could be used as entitlement activities for any non-CHODO agency. And now we'll just get right into the home funding request snapshot. As you can see, we received five requests totaling 4.773 million. We only had approximately 1.85 million to allocate, and we are recommending four projects at 1.85 million dollars. Left a gap of 2.923 million for what was requested versus what we actually have to allocate for the development of housing. And now, the home funding request and recommendations. Athens Housing Authority asked for 1.297 million for their Act 1 HOME program to build four single-family homebuyer units in Savannah Heights. They also want to provide down payment assistance. Their total score was 92.33. They ranked number one, and the recommendation is 1,020,000 for that project. Athens Area Habitat for Humanity requested 1.5 million for Micah's Creek infrastructure to support development of affordable housing, rental, and homebuyer units that they have in that project. Their total score was 90.67. They ranked number two. We're recommending $400,000. Athens Land Trust asked for 246,500 to rehab a single-family homebuyer unit. They scored 89.67, ranked number three. We're recommending $210,000. Athens Land Trust also asked for 258,800 to support rehab of a single-family rental unit. They scored 87.33, ranked number four. We're recommending 220,000. And finally, the last application was from Athens Land Trust requesting 1.47 million dollars to construct five single-family homebuyer units. They scored 86.33, ranked five. We did not recommend funding because we did not have enough funding remaining to allocate to that project. Next steps, we will, once the vote occurs, we will publish our notice for an AAP public comment period. Then we will actually publish our Annual Action Plan 5 draft for 30-day public comment. And our Annual Action Plan 5 is typically due to HUD by May 17. However, due to the delay in allocation funding, there has been a CPD notice stating a delay in actual submission to HUD in IDIS. So until we have that, we put initiate contracting between May and June. We can't really contract until we know exactly how much we have and how much can be awarded. No, pardon me. Our Annual Action Plan will be delayed. Our HOME actually will not be delayed. We know exactly how much we have. My apologies. Got CDBG mixed up there for a second. We will begin contracting May-June, and we will have those home funding contracts start July 1. You notice the environmental reviews are initiated in May after this commission has voted to approve projects. So we can begin that process pretty immediately. Questions or comments?
Any questions from the group? Melissa?
So is there a chance that Congress will announce additional funds?
If they do, we won't release them until FY26. We'll combine the FY25 with, potentially with FY26, or that's what we're going to use as our FY26 release.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Carol?
Then just to, can you go back to that timeline again? So that's the funding, the FY25 funding available. That's the new funding. This other stuff is the old funding. Is that correct?
Yes, my apologies. CDBG and HOME, we ran them together.
Yeah.
But we really won't be able, I was speaking for CDBG. I didn't mean to speak for HOME.
So does this mean, and I'm kind of, perhaps I wasn't following Commissioner Melissa Link's question as well. So is there going to be another round of this funding for that FY25?
We'll release it in October with our FY26 release.
Okay. And will that then take all the time till like this time next year to award then? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So those awards won't be till next year?
Correct.
We'll just bundle that in?
HUD required, we had an agreement with HUD, we had to take our home application process to an annual cycle.
Okay.
So it will run with CD, in tandem with CDBG.
Once a year?
Yes.
That's it. Oh, and you mentioned Savannah Heights. Where is that?
East Side.
It's on Vine Street.
Vine Street.
Vine Street, East Side. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I have one question about the $80,000 HCD funding, administrative. What is that?
Grant management. It's staff costs.
Okay, staff costs. So that doesn't come out of the budget, the annual budget?
I can answer that, if that's okay, Warren.
Sure.
So HCD is funded mostly by general funds, but then each of the federal programs does allow a certain amount for administration. And so oftentimes, the general fund is augmented with some of those funds. It's usually no more than 20%, I think, for any of those. That's usually programmed in.
Oh, thank you.
I do have one other question. I was thinking, just in a bigger picture here. These are federal funds that are coming down. We're distributing them here. Do these organizations have any other access to state or federal funds that doesn't come through us? Or does it all, all of their state and federal funds come through us?
Their HOME and CDBG comes from us because we're an entitlement. But they are able to apply for state funding. And if HUD releases any type of funding, or the federal government releases any funding that doesn't require it be allocated either by the state or by a local government, then they certainly could apply for that.
So when they're presenting their materials to you, are you aware of all their other funding sources?
Yes, the budget request, any other leveraging or supporting funds.
But not just for this project, for all of their, like, operations and work for the year?
We get that information, financial information. We can see that.
Yeah.
But what we're interested in when we're doing these type of RFP releases are specific to the projects themselves.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out, like, how much money is coming into Athens, not through us, but in other avenues as well, so we could understand the landscape, housing landscape, more completely in terms of what kind of federal and state funding we're getting. That might, that's not, it's a bigger question than this.
A notable example would be low-income housing tax credits.
Well, another example is Micah's Creek. You get both state and federal dollars.
I was going to say that, yeah, they got about $2 million for Habitat, got about $2 or $3 million from the state, so.
Yeah.
Melissa?
I have a quick question about the Ree Street house. Is that for a unit within the MacBurney House, or is that for one of the additional houses that we were able to save?
That is the final house. It's to the left of MacBurney.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, that's exciting.
Mm-hmm.
The whole block.
Anything else? All right, Melinda.
All right.
Phase two.
Done with number one. Okay, now I will present the FY25 Community Partnership Program funding recommendations. We will review the CPP inception, explain HCD's staff responsibilities in this process, the Vision Committee and its role for the CPP. We'll review the FY25 applications and then the remaining schedule. The Competitive Community Partnership Program for general funds was approved by this body in December 2023 and implemented for the first time in January of 2024. Future applications will be released in either early October or November, so that agencies have more time and the process, again, will run in tandem with this. Unfortunately, because of the decision-making process, there was a delay. We had to speed through this one to get it with the 25 budget. But next year, they'll have more time. HCD staff serves as facilitators to the Vision Committee for the CPP application process. We don't evaluate the applications and we don't recommend funding for this process. The Vision Committee was solely responsible for that. And our Vision Committee is tasked with the review of the applications and the provision of project funding recommendations. We have seven members of 10 right now. We hope to get the full body back up to 10. But we did have a quorum of five out of seven for this process. We had one member that fully abstained because they requested funding for this project. So they neither reviewed anything and they were not a part of the funding recommendation Vision Committee ratings for that took account for four different criteria, financial, community involvement, outcomes, and organization and staff ability. Equity assessment was a part of the evaluation process as well. Each application could earn up to 100 total points. For eligible projects, agencies could apply for eligible community services, including neighborhood revitalization, poverty reduction, and economic strength, or intervention and prevention activities. Or they could apply for eligible homeless services, which would include case management. But they also had to agree to assist with the annual pit count and be active participants in the Athens Homeless Coalition as a member. The estimated FY25 CPP funds is $550,000. We received 16 applications totaling 1.757 million, leaving a gap of 1.2 million between what was asked for and what we have to provide. And just to give a little application summary, intervention and prevention submitted the most number of applications. We got nine of those. But the largest funding request came from the four homeless services applications totaling 855,650,000. So. And now we'll just get right into the review. I'm gonna just do a quick jump here. I'm gonna let you see. These are the first nine, and then these are the last 16. But you see that two of the agencies within the second table are being recommended for funding. So to go back, we have the bigger vision of Athens ranked number one for their abundant life homeless program. The Vision Committee is recommending $38,800, The Sparrow's Nest, ranked number two for their homeless breaking the cycle program. They are being recommended for 46,850. Acceptance Recovery Center tied for number three and number four with Project SAFE. Both are intervention programs. Acceptance Recovery Center is being recommended for 16,500, and Project SAFE is being recommended for 91,428. Georgia Conflict Center ranked number five for their restorative justice program. They're being recommended for 35,129. Athens Area Diaper Bank ranked number six. They're being recommended for $33,000. Athens Area Homeless Shelter ranked number seven. They're being recommended for 120,000. United Way of Northeast Georgia ranked number eight. They are being recommended for 24,400. Divas Who Win ranked number nine. They're being recommended for $50,000. Juvenile Offender Advocate, Inc., ranked number 10. They're being recommended for 40,000. And Athens Model Neighborhood Health Center ranked number 11, and they are being recommended for $53,893. The remaining projects are not being recommended for funding. Unfortunately, there just was not enough to go around.
Can I ask you a question about that? Certainly, certainly, I don't know much about the Twin Angels project, but certainly the Athens Land Trust, Young Urban Builders, has been, has been something we've been working with for the past few years. And I would hate to see that go away.
They're currently receiving ARPA funding.
Are they?
For that project, which was a part of the reasoning for the Vision Committee not recommending them for funding for general funds, because they're currently receiving ARPA funding.
Okay.
Through 2026.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You go first. You're ready.
Melanie, is the presentation just about done?
Yeah.
Let's get through just the next couple of slides and then we'll have more questions.
Sorry.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. We'll do, this will be on the agenda for next week. We'll be in the voting session for April 2. We will initiate contracting in May. Funding will be available starting July 1 in 2024, and will run through June 30, 2025. There we go. Now we have questions.
Carol Dexter.
Dexter, can you go first?
Dexter.
Thank you. I wasn't waiting to get to all of this, but I did want to address the Athens Neighborhood Health Center. Of course, they were part of our regular budget, part of the commission budget, and I am going to request that we put them back in the budget. They were taken out of our regular budget and to go through those funding requests. But I am going to request that we put them back in the budget.
The Athens Neighborhood Health Center?
Yeah.
They're being recommended for funding.
But they was, they was part of our budget, though, our regular.
All of these. Well, the previous independent agencies were part of the budget, but none of them were competitively offered. So it was not very transparent, and the access for other nonprofits was nonexistent. So this new program does that, puts it on the table, and lets folks compete for it, and y'all can decide.
And just of like all the sort of alternate paths into the future, the commission could elect to allocate additional dollars beyond the 550,000.
Okay. Because I guess where I was getting at, when I looked at our original budget, we had other funding sources within our own budget initially. we had other funding sources within our own budget initially, and they was part of that, but they was taken out, and then there was.
The $550,000, that was, that constituted all the funding for all of the agencies in last year's budget.
Okay.
It was moved to this program, and then we sent it all out. Now, as the mayor just said, you could add more money to the program if you wanted.
Okay.
But, and then for this reason, staff let Vision Committee make the call, you know, because we know it's political, and they looked at the merits of each of these, and in this case, the Neighborhood Health Center is being funded, now not at the funding request that they wanted. And Melinda, did you say that, that, that the Vision Committee, there were so many good applications, I remember you telling me that they wanted to kind of stretch the funds and include as many as they could?
Yes.
And so some got less, but more got something.
Initially, they were informed that if they wanted to fund the top nine at almost full funding requests, that's as far as they could go, the number nine would have to be cut, or one of those would have to be cut by 30,000 to be able to fund the top nine at full request. Anything beyond the top nine, then they would have to look at cutting funding requests all the way down the line, and they chose to do that, so rather than only funding nine, they chose to fund 11.
Okay. Thank you. But Carol, I'll get to everybody.
Just because this is a new program, so in our agenda report, in our history, it's going to go over the evolution of that program, I would assume, right? And then in that history, will we see what we funded last year that we took and we moved into this?
We can.
That would be helpful, just to know, so I don't have to go through.
It is, it is a part of the, the vote that you did to agree to create the CPP, it was in that agenda.
Right, I just, just for.
But as a history item, or facts and issues, she'd just like to have last year's recipients were this at this amount.
So I don't have to go look in it, and I can get it all together.
Do that.
Melissa?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if we could see the score sheets to understand why some of these got lower scores, and just kind of, just get an understanding of what they were being evaluated on, because we're likely to get questions and inquiries from the subjects.
Melinda, I'll work with you, we'll put them on the FTP site for commissioners and they'll get it.
Sure, again, the application and the review criteria was a part of the original FY25 CPP vote, so it had not only all the questions that the agencies were asked, but the voting criteria for the Vision Committee, how they made those determinations.
I think it would be helpful if we could actually see like how they were scored, yeah.
You know, it ain't.
Well, they worked through Zoom Grants, so we don't have, all we have is numbers, like per category, what they actually scored them per category, we don't have an insight to.
Okay.
Where they came up with, why they gave them, maybe a, for example, if they had, could get a max of 25 for capacity, if someone gave them 18, that's all we're gonna see is that they gave them an 18, and the rationale would be that from this number to this number, they met this criteria, from this number to this number, but the nuance of in-between is, there's no way for us to know that.
Okay.
I mean, we're happy to do it, I mean, I can give it to you, it's just, just trying to explain, it's just gonna be numbers.
Yeah, that's fine, I think I'd be interested to see the numbers, because I know in the past when we've had similar funding requests, we've had weird kind of disparity in numbers.
Their totals are an attachment for this agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, I just remembered.
That's a lot.
Thanks, Melinda, yeah, so you said that the Land Trust Young Urban Builders Program is already being funded for this time period using ARPA money?
Yes, they're funded through December 2026.
Okay, so do you have any sense of why they would have applied for this if they've already got the funding from elsewhere?
It's a program that they, that was, the inception was through general funds, and I can't really speak for them other than maybe they wanted to expand it further or maintain current plus the ARPA.
Okay, are there any others that aren't being recommended for funding that are in a similar boat, where they made a request, but it's funded through another source?
Not for the ones not being recommended.
Okay, well, then I just, if we're asking staff to kind of aggregate some stuff for the history, or however it comes with us as an attachment, I think it'd be helpful to also have listed like the organizations that would have needed to be applying through this to remain in the budget, you know how we got that list of all the organizations that were in this year's, or what we could call last year's fiscal year budget, that would now be applying for this if they're gonna continue with funding?
Is there a, is the question, you wanna know how many of last year's recipients applied this year?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I can go through and put together what we've gotten from past emails, but I think for the benefit of everybody being able to see it in one place, having all of those agencies listed.
That's what.
That's what we're gonna do in the general.
That's what I was asking for.
Including the ones that didn't apply?
Yeah, that would be good, too.
That's what I'm asking for, is the ones that didn't apply as well.
Yeah.
So that we kind of know going into the budget, this is, you know, this is a transition that we're all going through to have it all in one place, I think would be helpful.
Okay.
Sure.
Thanks.
All right, chapter three.
I do, I do have one more question on that, because this is the first time doing this, is there any point at which we're gonna get reflections from you all, from the Vision Committee about this process? You know, it's not like, we just, we just switched to this, right? It's the first time, do we have some evaluation here, reflection, are we happy with this process? Were you all happy with it? I mean, we might not be, but you all, like, were you all happy with it? Did it?
The Vision Committee seemed to appreciate the process, they appreciated that their voices were heard, we did, there is a recorded meeting from the funding recommendation meeting that you can review, it's on the Vision Committee page, you can hear a lot of their comments that they made about the process. We did hear a couple of questions that we will consider adding, that would help give them a little bit more insight based on the conversation. I think the only thing that, that we heard and we had to explain it more than once was, we're very sorry that we had to release it in January, and it was such a short turnaround process, but that was just so that we could meet the FY25 budget deadline. In the future, we will release it in October, giving plenty of time, 30 days, to actually fill out the application, and give the Vision Committee their time to review, and then have plenty of time for this process to take place. But that was the only feedback that I'm aware of that we got on the process.
Okay.
Well, a slight frustration that people had to apply for funding they were used to getting.
As a matter of course.
Yes.
Yeah.
Jesse?
Yeah, just one other thing I wanted to ask, if you already have the information, if it could be sent to us, and if not, if you could ask the agencies that applied and are being recommended for funding, but not at the full amount, if we could get some clarity on how that's going to affect the program that they've applied for funding?
I can share the application with you, that is a question in the application, it was some, it was a part of helping the Vision Committee make determination of who they may or may not cut, the question specifically asked, if your funding is reduced from the amount that you're asking, how will you function? And they actually answered the question in that capacity, so we, I mean, we can provide that to you fairly easily.
That'd be wonderful, and I do just wanna note, you know, we've been funding the Athens Area Homeless Shelter for a few years since COVID, and there's a pretty significant reduction here, so I don't know if that's something colleagues are interested in trying to look into, to make sense of.
We'll put all the applications, all the score sheets on the FTP site.
Carol?
One more detailed question, we're down three people in the Vision Committee? I noticed, I just have a list of the committees that we're about to announce for, and I do not see the Vision Committee on there, is that, do we know why, are they appointed some other way?
No, they're appointed by this body, and we can check with the clerk in the morning.
Okay.
Good?
All right, moving on to CDBG.
Sorry, my mouse is acting weird. There we go. All right, final one. FY25 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funding recommendations. I will skim through the consolidated plan, because I did that with home, but I will look at the goals, we'll explain the CDBG application review process, review the CDBG proposals and funding recommendations, and then review the remaining Annual Action Plan Five schedule. As stated before, this, the consolidated plan is a five-year needs assessment and gaps analysis to help us decide which targeted programs we will work through in the next five years. This is the final annual action plan for this current five-year con plan. The, we have six consolidated plan goals for CDBG activities, and they are affordable housing, economic development and workforce development, education and enrichment, homeless services, special populations, and public infrastructure. Again, our 10-member resident advisory committee are appointed by this body with three-year service terms, we are currently at seven members, but that is enough to meet quorum. The, sorry, I changed this to resident participation, I don't know why it says that. The Vision Committee advises HCD and supports us in our annual action plan process, providing input on the emerging community needs, and by sharing feedback to assist HCD staff in prioritizing CDBG funding each year. This year, they helped us review the applications through December, we met with them on January 22nd to review all application scores and to recommend funding. For the, this is former funding up to 2024, which is our current, we always allocate 20% admin for HCD administration and planning activities, there is a 15% regulatory cap on public service activities annually, and then the remaining 65% of funding can be allocated to affordable housing, economic development, and public facilities and improvements activities. Again, HUD has not allocated funding this year, so for CDBG, we use a three-year average to determine anticipated FY25 CDBG award and available funding. Once we have an official announcement from HUD, we will have to do a NOPA submission to correct any errors on those funding allocations, recommendations, to get them within the budget. This year, a new, we have a new CDBG application review process that incorporated the Vision Committee into the point criteria, they were very much participating in this, it was a combined evaluation source, and so total combined scores determined the rank in funding recommendations this year for CDBG. And as you can see, HCD staff had five criteria, and the Vision Committee had a total of 40 points for their two criteria, and an application could receive up to 140 points. CDBG funding request snapshot, we received 24 requests totaling $2.6 million, we had approximately, or we anticipate having approximately $1.38 million to allocate, so we are recommending 17 projects at $1.381 million. And the total public service application alone created a $456,000 gap between what we can actually award versus what was requested, they asked for 338% of the 15% available, but a total funding gap of $1.23 million between what we have and what was asked for. And now we'll get into those recommendations, we're gonna start with affordable housing, we received four applications, all four are being recommended for funding. Historic Athens, their hands-on Historic Athens Homeowner Occupied Rehab Project scored number one, or ranked number one scoring 121, and the combined recommendation is $130,000. Athens Area Habitat for Humanity is requesting $175,000 for their Renew Athens BWK and their E-Hart program, that is homeowner occupied rehab and supportive development of homebuyer units, they rank number two, we're recommending the $130,000. Athens Land Trust ranked number three, requesting $382,000 for their affordable housing program, which is used to support their home program developments, we are recommending $170,000, and the Athens Housing Authority requested $441,000, they rank number four for the Act One Homes program. This application is also to support their home application, to develop the four housing units, and we are recommending $140,000.
Good question, the first two then are for rehab?
Homeowner Occupied Rehab.
Rehab, and the second two are for new housing?
Yes. We have two neighborhood revitalization areas, they're called NERSAs, these projects are, can be carried out in Hancock Corridor, Census Track 6 and 9, in East Athens, Census Track 301, 302. One of the most important factors of having NERSAs in place are that community-based development organizations can carry out public service activities under the economic development category, so they are not subject to the 15% service cap, and currently, East Athens Development Corporation is the only certified CBDO in Athens.
Melissa, do you have questions?
Yeah, I have a question about the NERSAs, I know they were established like decades ago, do they get reevaluated with the new census data?
They get reevaluated every year, these two remain, it doesn't mean that we couldn't expand, it's just, that would, it would be helpful to get some help to do that, and it takes, it's very time-consuming, and we just have not had time, it's something that we're gonna evaluate in our upcoming consolidated plan draft, but these two.
I'm looking at Census Track 6, and that is extremely gentrified with high-end student housing and, you know, high-end.
It is still coming up on the Census Track as qualifying as area benefit.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to evaluate every year.
Okay.
And our economic development requests and recommendations, East Athens Development Corporation in partnership with Innovative Healthcare Institute requested $150,000 for the Operation One Family at a Time program, they rank number one, and their funding, we're recommending $102,752. East Athens Development Corporation for their Bridging the Gap Job Coaching Program requested $50,000, they rank number two, we are recommending $30,000. Goodwill of North Georgia requested $64,000 for their Good Biz Micro Enterprise Program, they rank number three, and we're recommending $50,000. Athens Land Trust ranked number four for their Grow Your Business Micro Enterprise Program, they asked for $103,000, we are recommending $50,000. East Athens Development Corporation in partnership with multiple youth providers is requesting $50,000 for the Youth Economic Development Program, we're recommending $30,000, and we got a new application from We Care, Inc., they do businesses upwards, they requested $144,000 for their business, or their boost program, they rank number six, and we're not, Vision Committee and HCD is not recommending funding for that program. So for public services, again, there is a 15% regulatory cap on that budget, we cannot exceed that, they are, public services are to provide supportive services, and we are proposing to utilize up to 15% of the FY25 budget toward those service activities. And the, in the FY24 competition, the challenge grant, I'm sorry, that should be 25, includes a maximum award of $30,000 and a 25% cash match requirement, meaning based on our projected funding award, we can award up to six projects in public services. And eligible public service request, Sparrow's Nest ranked to number one for their Food Insecurities and Respirits Assistance Program, they requested 30, we are recommending 30,000. Family Promise of Athens ranked number two, requesting $33,000 for their shelter program, we are recommending $33,600. Advantage Behavioral Health Systems requested $30,000 for their Mainstream Benefits Specialist Program, they rank three, we're recommending 30,000. The RQ MOC is requesting. The RQ MOC is requesting 30,000 for their Commonwealth Athens Program. They rank number four. We are recommending 30,000. Georgia Conflict Center requested 34,200 for their Restorative Justice Diversion Program. Rank number five. We're recommending 30,000. ACC High School Completion Initiative requested 50,000 for their Education Matters Program. They rank number six. We're recommending 30,000. Chess and Community Conference Young, or YWCO and Athens Land Trust were not recommended for funding based on fund inavailability. We did have four ineligible public service applications. Two did not provide their match documentation that's required to be included with the application. One was not clearly tied to an approved con plan and did not provide a national objective direct service to clientele, and one just had an incomplete application with none of the required documentation And this, for FY24, Mayor Commission approved that any carryforward funding from FY23 activities could be used specifically for public facilities and improvements projects so that we can get that money spent. We had two applications. Salvation Army requested 50,000. They rank number one for their Center of Hope Emergency Shelter Roof Rehab Project. We are recommending 50,000. And as caveat, that is not included in their ARPA award. We made sure that the roof is not included in ARPA. Totally different project. And then ACC God Leisure Services requested 173,000 for Lay Park Basketball Court Improvements, and they rank number two, and we're recommending 58,574 for that project. As with the home schedule, the CDBG schedule, this is where contracting cannot be initiated until we know for sure what our actual allocation is. We have made corrections to those allocations. Then we can initiate contracts, so contracting. So as soon as we have that funding in place and we know, we will initiate contracting effective immediately. But we should have everything up and running by July 1st. To date, HUD has never not given us that funding before the beginning of a new grant year. And that is it for that.
That, that means in other words, Congress, get your act together.
Yes, please.
So Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I've got two questions, and thank you for your report. I see some of the same players have applied since I've been on this commission, and I have never seen a report after they have gotten our funding. So I'm recommending or suggesting, if we're going to be funding these organizations, I'd like to see some type of report, how they use the money, what were some outcomes, and I think we need to request that, and I, and if that is, if that reporting is somewhere, I'd like to see where it's at or have it sent to the-
We can give it to you at any time. All of our CDBG and home agencies report monthly. We have to collect that data for HUD. We put it in the IDIS HUD system quarterly, and we actually have performance tables that we provide to our vision committee when we do annual application reviews, so we have that information as well to show how much money was spent. I think we've provided, I've provided that to you last year, but we can provide that information. But we're also working with GIO to create a dashboard, a data dashboard for the HCD website, where that information would also be pretty readily available, similar to the way the ARPA dashboard looks.
Okay.
But we can give that anytime you want that reporting. We are able to provide it to you.
I think it'd be a good idea to share that with us.
Yeah, absolutely.
My second question is, I am a little concerned that we're awarding Leisure Services Department money for basketball court improvements, and I would think that would come through their maintenance program through their, their budget. So that's going to be hard for me to support. That's, I mean, you know, we, we use these, I'm hoping we try to use these funds for agencies outside of our, in our government relations, so.
Well-
A little bit of issue-
Lay Park is a part of our, of our NERSA, our East Athens NERSA, so it's an area benefit for the East Athens community. So just like with Herd Park's basketball restoration, this is the same thing. So it's going to have an area benefit for East Athens NERSA and serve the entire population there, which is why they can apply for it. They could not apply for just anywhere in Athens. They can only apply for one of our two NERSAs.
Well, I'm just, I'm thinking about the look, how that looks from the government. Our government is getting these funds. I understand, but I just think that, if they needed those type of for Lay Park Basketball Court improvements, that should be part of the budget, so.
Well, and we may not have recommended them if we did not have our carryforward funding that was not expended from FY23, that we need to get expended so that we can get our numbers back up, our funding awards back up annually. Sitting on 100,000 that was unspent by our other agencies doesn't look good. This is a way to make sure that that money gets spent and serves an area benefit, a community that needs it, that hasn't been, that's not being currently served. So that is the purpose. Typically, it, it would be difficult to fund that when we're prioritizing, but because these are specifically carryforward funds that were allocated for public facilities projects, these are the two applications that we got, so that's where we allocated the money.
Good. You know, and we gave more, gave a little more money. We gave Salvation Army.
Well, but Salvation Army only asked for 50,000, and we're awarded, we're recommending 100% of their requests.
Okay, well, again-
So we can't give them more than they ask for.
I understand, but I'm, I'm always thinking about perception-
I hear you.
-and impact, so.
Commissioner Taylor, and then Commissioner Myers.
Oh, no, I just, because Lay Park, I don't see how Lay Park would fall into East Athens when it's across the river. It's, it's actually just in walking distance from here. But I do understand the need to upgrade the basketball court, but I just wanted to make it. I just wanted to know, like, because it even shows, like, this is College Avenue, and it's right outside of the green area that, that covers Census Track 301 and 302. But again, I love the kids.
(laughing)
Got to have a good basketball court.
Never mind.
Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Link.
Well, one is, I'm just trying to follow through on Commissioner Fisher's comment and thinking through here. And so I was looking back at this purpose here in the beginning, and so it says, of course, a lot of these look kind of the same, don't they, these presentations? So, but back in the beginning, it said this public ser, infrastructure money specifically says to foster public infrastructure improvements that improve the lives of low and moderate income residents in Athens Clark County. So, I mean, does this, so, public infrastructure, the Salvation Army in this sense counts as public infrastructure improvement?
Correct. For CDBG purposes, shelters-
Yeah.
-are part of public improvements.
Yeah.
Eligible activities.
And did I just hear you say that the Herd Park facilities were used, were approved with the same facility, with the same funding source?
CDBG assisted with Herd Park last year?
A couple of years ago.
Yeah, and where, where is that map? What, what, there it is, on East Athens.
Yeah, it is, that's, but this is not the neighbor, is this the neighborhood revitalization plan? This is different money than that, isn't it?
It's, it's not economic development.
Okay.
It's public facilities and improvements.
Okay.
It's all CDBG, but it's different regulatory criteria for eligibility.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Melissa?
I just want to remind everyone that Lay Park is directly adjacent to the North Downtown project, which is going to hold hundreds, you know, several hundred bedrooms of low-income residents. So, you know, improving that facility as much as possible will, is really important to, to meet the needs of those kids that are going to be living there.
Well, and Leisure Services has to, you know, be frugal with its funding as well. It's not going to be able to do every project that is on their list to be done. So when an opportunity for them to apply for CDBG to assist an area benefit project comes into play, they're going to request that so that it can get done.
I'll share, I serve as a rebound catcher on that basketball court frequently, and lots of community kids spend some time there.
All right, Bill.
Commissioner Wolf.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of follow up on the We Care Upwards thing. Would you be able to summarize why that hasn't been recommended for anything? And I ask because I learned about that program some time ago, and it seemed like a really promising way to get more small childcare providers, more children to, to help take care of.
From comments that were made by staff and by Vision Committee, major concern is they're not located in Athens. They're, they're from Florida, so they would have to create a hub, to office here in Athens to create this program. Second of all, they didn't include any MOUs, establish partnerships with anybody in Athens. So they made statements in the application that they had met and spoken with, but they showed nothing to indicate that they actually had partnerships in agencies or provider, childcare providers in play that were ready to start working with them if this program were to be funded.
Okay. Did they provide any information on how this model has worked in other communities?
They did.
Were they, and was their genesis point from those communities similar with like not a pre-existing MOU, but then a number of providers do get involved?
They didn't provide that kind of inform, that detail.
One of the things I'll note about both the services and the economic development category, kind of having observed these over the years, is it's not unusual for an organization to apply for the first time, and then over the course of a subsequent year, develop some of those partnerships and really kind of revise and refine their, their application in a subsequent year. So I, I have to imagine these comments are probably helpful for them, and I imagine that the response from HCD will be-
When allocate, or when funding is awarded, when you make the final recommendations, we do send out letters to awardees and non-awardees, and we offer technical assistance to those that were not recommended for funding or not awarded, so that they can go through and ask those questions. We can give them explanations. We can go through the whole process, things that were brought up, that were concerns about their application, deficiencies in the application. So if they do choose to apply again, then they have that information in their hands.
I have another question. I'm just asking for requests here on these, but just so I can understand what's going on. For the project names, some of them are self, you know, they're explained, they explain themselves, but others don't. I'm just wondering if we could have some like sort of addendum that just has-
Attachment two.
You are right there with me, explaining what each one does.
Comprehensive summaries of each application have been provided in attachment two. Tells you how much they're asking for, exactly what they are doing, what they are proposing to do, and past performance. So Commissioner Fisher, if you look on attachment two, you can actually see FY 23, 22, 3, and 4, for former recipients. Table, performance tables are there in attachment two.
Jesse?
Yeah, I guess I just, I'm, I'm not interested in trying to, you know, like, question or redo any work that was done this time around, but just for the benefit of others behind the rail, you know, next year, if, if Upwards, which is the new company name for We Care, does decide to apply, hopefully they'll find a way to do a better job of presenting the information that's necessary with the evidence that's required to back it up. But my understanding of that program is that it is a way to get a lot of funding and business to small childcare providers in this community. And so I just caution against us thinking of it too much on the lens of like, well, it's this out-of-town entity that's facilitating it, because if that out-of-town entity is ultimately providing a service that on the local level, no upstart local entity could, and it's going to boost the ability for a number of childcare providers to get more funding and be able to take on more clients and things, and I think that might be a very valuable program. Again, it seems like they'd have to do a better job of making the case through the application process, but I, I just want to caution against us thinking of them as being like almost inherently not somebody we want to work with because they're not based out of here, so.
All right, Melinda, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, and with one final presentation. So Commissioners had said they were interested in some, some degree of brevity, and so Item D, the T-SLOSS project, you know, may be one that in future cycles you simply want information about, but of course, it's the case that often traffic calming and traffic safety is, is of enormous interest to this body and the public, so we're going to go ahead and hear some of those.
All right.
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 Good evening, everybody. We are here tonight to talk about our T-SLOSS 2023 project number 30. Traffic Safety Improvement Projects are more affectionately known as Traffic Signal Replacement Program. We have myself representing the SLOSS office, and we'll kick it off. We've got Tim Griffith and George Spearing from Traffic Engineering, and we have some of our consultants tonight, Kate Sheeran and Chuck Bailey here tonight to answer any questions and make that presentation. Our purpose tonight, of course, the typical, some history, initial project statement, information you've probably read through and already know. I'll just make a one caveat on this slide here, that not only are we trying to introduce a new process to objectively score signal intersections, that way when new staff comes along or other people retire and move on, that we've got some, we don't lose some of the historical knowledge, and we've got a, an objective base to do that. And then also, out of that objective base coming out, we've identified several intersections that we want to prioritize that we can go ahead and move forward towards the planning plan. And so we'll talk a little bit about those this evening, and these are the type of information that'll be coming in the forthcoming Project history, not a lot here. Of course, program was identified and submitted under the SLOSS 2023 program, which of course y'all selected and funded. And again, our initial project statement really identifies that capital improvements for traffic safety, rebuilding, replacing signals, the controls, the fiber optics, all the, the little nuanced pieces that go with the traffic signal. It's not just the red, yellow, and green things that you see hanging up there. And for right now, I'd like Traffic Engineering to come in and be able to talk a little bit more about their general information and conditions of existing inventory.
Thank you, Derek. The next several slides are related to the conditions of the existing signal inventory. National lifespan, recommended lifespan is 13 years for these traffic signals, and we do have quite a few, 40, that are 40 years old or older. This failing infrastructure is a safety concern to the public and as well as to traffic engineering staff. I don't know how many of you are aware of this, but it's quite often that our signal techs get shocked while they're working on these traffic signals. And if you've ever, well, most of you probably have not had the pleasure to look in these devices, most of these devices, once you, you look into the area where we have the wires where they're collected, it, it is a ball of wires, just a mass of wires. Why? Because over the years, particularly around the downtown area, people have come into these things unbeknownst to us and added, what, even tapped into our power lines. And these things are old. They're, some of them are quite old, actually. The updated signals, of course, would increase the level of service in and around Athens, and one of the things I know that in Athens, we are particularly fond of harping on is the speed on our streets. We have programs that deal with this. One of the things to keep in mind with our traffic signal system is that not only could in areas we facilitate efficient traffic flow, we could also slow traffic down by controlling what these cars use. We can platoon them through a particular system in Athens. Now, that's not possible for us to platoon all over Athens at the same time. The, the technology doesn't exist yet for us to do that, but it is coming. Also, we can increase the efficiency for pedestrians, for bicyclists, and others with newer signals. We can't do that on a lot of our signals now. But one of the other things I'd like to mention in conjunction with new traffic signals is the, the emissions factor. We keep cars from just sitting and idling here in Athens. Hopefully, we won't have- Hopefully, we won't have the, the emissions problems that, uh, some other areas have. Another thing I'd like to mention, too, I go out from time to time with our signal crew and help them on some projects when they, when they need me. I don't know how much help I am to them, but typically, when I go out, I take the nastiest dirty job that they have to offer. Not too long ago, we were out at Rock Springs in Broad, working on a traffic signal there. Some of the things that are missing on our traffic signals are caps for the poles, plates, cover plates, we, you know, if a cover plate's missing, it'd be easy for not just a child, but even some of us to reach our hand in and make connection with some of those cracked wires that are in there. These ancient wires are cracked in a lot of the signals. The one at Rock Springs that I went out to was missing a cap on top, and you'd think, well, why don't you just replace the cap? These poles haven't been made for many years, they're, you can't find a replacement cap for those, so I spent, what, two or three hours? They gave me the wonderful job of digging a squirrel's nest out of that signal pole. You can imagine what, that squirrels and wires aren't compatible, but I, as I dug, the pole gets larger at the bottom, and it kept falling and falling and falling, and wound up with a pile of debris over waist-high that I'd picked out of that pole. So these poles are in need of repair. The protective coverings are missing on a lot of these wires. Another thing that I'd like to mention to you as well is, is, uh, the, uh, sun damage on the UV damage on these signals. If you've, most of y'all have been out to our facility and seen traffic signals, if you see one that's just been removed, it's brittle, like a potato chip. These things don't last forever. And with this, I'll let Derek take back over, I'll have another segment here briefly.
We're gonna let Kate actually take the lead.
Okay, I'm sorry.
She helped, uh, work with the team to develop some of the major capabilities, our, our major data points, and she helped walk us through some of that.
Absolutely. Okay, so in order to look at all your signals that you have, we wanted to have a way for you to be able to rank them and prioritize them based off of the funding that you have available, as well as, um, the priorities that you have for the city and the county. So we looked at some of those main data points that we were seeing before, the infrastructure, the overall age, pole condition, the wiring condition, and then maintenance as well, number of service calls, how many times the Athens Clark County staff are going out there, how many times the signal's going into flash, which would affect the general public actually going through the intersection, and then a variety of other, um, data points that we'll go into in further slides. But we wanted to create a matrix that was easy to fill out for the, the staff here, that you could get a score pretty quickly, that had data points that were easily accessible, that you weren't wasting a bunch of time trying to prioritize signals rather than using that money to go do the work. So, like I said, we have infrastructure, maintenance. We also looked at standards, so current design standards, some of these signals are forty years old, they do not meet current design standards. Even the size of the signal head, and they used to be eight inches, and now they're, the standard is twelve inches, so that you can see it better, having a reflective back plate, has a safety component behind it, to be able to see, especially if the, um, signal goes dark, um, the lights from your car will then reflect against the back plate and let you know that you're coming up to an intersection. Flashing yellow arrows has a safety benefit for turning left, um, just the standard cabinet that is now installed is different than what used to be out there. Fiber allows a signal to be connected back to the central server, so that they can remotely, um, look at how the signal's operating and make changes without going out into the field, and to diagnose issues as well before going out in the field. Minimum head height, if you have a head height that's too low, a truck can hit it and cause the signal to go into flash, or now you've lost the green indication, um, for a movement. We've also looked at pavement markings and pedestrian accommodations. Some of these data points are very easy to collect, yes or no. Some of them have a ranking of one to five, which we've identified with working with the Traffic Engineering Group here, what they would rank as a one or as a five. We also added two components, um, that are lower scoring in terms of the weight, because the funding that goes into how you would evaluate these, um, locations aren't focused on, um, adding capacity or making major changes to the intersection that would correct safety issues necessarily. So we do have traffic volumes, and we do have safety in there, looking at the number of crashes, um, but those are lower scoring because we want to use those to prioritize a certain location where they're matching on some of these other standards and infrastructure needs. Um, so if you do have two identical intersections, and one has a whole lot more volume, we want to prioritize that one. So the infrastructure is weighted the highest. On the previous slide, we saw it was weighted thirty-five percent, and that's because the Signal Upgrade Program is focused on upgrading the infrastructure at the intersection, so where those infrastructure needs are high, we want that to weight the intersection higher in the priority. Maintenance also is a very high factor. Um, our standards, each one of these is about two to three percent, except for the pedestrian accommodations, which is at ten percent, um, and then traffic volumes is at five percent, and safety is at ten percent. So this is what the matrix that we came up with look like, looks like. It's a single page, all of the data is on this one page, it tells you the date, intersection information, and then the scoring, um, for each element that we just talked about, um, and then you can also add notes in there that can be referenced later. So this can either be printed out and used out in the field, or it's in an Excel file where it will automatically calculate the score on its own. The second and third page are just descriptions. The second page is purely a description of what the, um, metric is, and then the rankings, how you would describe the different one through five rankings, if it's just a yes or no, it, um, tells you that, too. If someone does not have a data point and leaves it blank, it just will not include that in the scoring, it'll, um, leave it as a one, um, so it won't add any additional score to it. The last page just defines everything in there as to what the weight is, what the numbers are, how they're all added up, um, so these two pages would not change at all. They're just there for reference for the user to make sure that they're using it correctly. And once we've done the evaluation for all those intersections, we wanted to have a way of prioritizing them and tracking all that data, so we have a separate spreadsheet, since this, this one would be a centralized, um, document that someone in the Traffic Engineering Group would maintain. When you fill out the Excel file, it will create this line, single row, that has all of that information in it, that is then copied and pasted into this prioritization spreadsheet, and then it can be sorted and filtered based off of the overall score, or just the infrastructure score, or just the maintenance score, or just the standard score. That way, if you've got funding that comes in in the future that's focused on a certain priority, you can rank it based off of that. And that's, I think, about it for, for my section.
Thank you.
Do we want to do questions now, or?
No, wait, let's, let's go ahead, we'll get in here. Thank you. These four intersections ranked the highest on the matrix score out of the list of ten that we presented to the T-SLOSS Committee. And then here you see the breakdown of the estimated budget, and how we, we want that to fall out. And our next steps and the project schedule are here, so you see we've got some, some close dates here, so this is gonna happen, uh, not in the, not tomorrow, but coming soon. And questions?
Melissa?
So, um, I presume that some of these improvements will add some left turn signals on some of these, or allow for oncoming traffic to stop, so.
There will probably be quite a few of those.
I mean, I know it's, it's a big issue on MLK at, um, at College and at First Street. Yeah, and definitely at Hawthorne, too, Hawthorne and Old Epps. Yeah, so, and, and so the twenty, two-point-nine million dollars, that's not all gonna be spent on these four intersections, this is just getting us started, right?
It's probably gonna use it all, isn't it?
Really? It's gonna cost that much?
It will use, it will use all its funds on these four intersections. We originally had a list of ten, but since only a certain amount of funding was, uh, available, we can only do four. And then again, like you were talking about, uh, the left turn lanes, uh, this is not a, an intersection redesign.
Yeah.
So if it doesn't have a left turn lane, it's, it's not gonna get an addition, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, like, some of them don't have left turn lanes, but, you know, just keeping that oncoming traffic stopped while it allows left turns and straight, and, you know, but those kind of timing signals, so, to allow for that oncoming traffic to be stopped, so left turns can be made. So I know it's, it's, it's a big issue at College, especially.
Yes, it is.
So for example, might a protected left be provided if it was in existence now, knowing that the lane format is gonna stay the same?
If we, if we had, if we had the real estate, the right way to do it, yes, yes, it would be an option, certainly, and we're trying to bring these all up to current standards. So if we've got the lane there, or the pavement width to accommodate a lane, then those things could, could be done, because we are looking at pavement markings as well.
If there's not, you, can you, you know, still signalize it so it allows for that oncoming traffic to stay stopped, so that one lane can move, whether it's turning left or going straight, and then allow them both to move straight?
We, we hope that we'll have these all maximized for efficiency, yes.
Yeah, 'cause it's definitely an issue there and on Epps Bridge.
Dexter?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So taking a look at all, um, if we look at all our track, traffic signals, or just certain ones that we thought was an issue, have we, I'm not sure what our consultants did, but they look at all our traffic signals, just certain ones that we thought that need replacing.
We, we are going to look at all of the traffic signals, they will all be ranked over time. We estimate that it would take our staff about eighteen months to rank all of them, and then to come up with a priority list accordingly.
Okay, 'cause I wanna go with, with my colleague, Commissioner Hu, we talked about last time, we were talking about infrastructure, and I guess we really need to, um, start concentrating and looking at those things, traffic lights, and turn signals, and things of that nature, so, um, I'd like to see when eighteen months, I'll get through what you, um, to process, what that looks like and what that cost may look like once y'all done with that, with the research.
Yes, sir.
Patrick?
Well, um, this is a blind question, actually, maybe, Mayor, we do have a T-SLOSS coming up, 'cause two-point-nine for four intersections is, um, kind of, uh, not hitting, not getting the job done when it comes to total action. So eighteen months, would that coincide with the T-SLOSS, and for the T-SLOSS project, it is, well, something like this qualified for a T-SLOSS?
Yes, and I think we're a couple of years away from the nine-month, ten-month process to, to deliver that list for y'all for final approval, and the vote's probably in twenty-seven, so we're still a few years away. Now, that could be accelerated by tax collections, and if, if it continues to generate, then it could be a little sooner. I think we're about ten months ahead of time, last time I checked. But no, absolutely, and Commissioner Davenport, I appreciate that, and I hope you all will, will, like, pack these away, because before you know it, we'll be talking T-SLOSS, and then we kind of get misdirected on other things, and these, these safety improvements are all important.
Others? All right, great compact presentation. Thank you, everybody. All right, uh, so, uh, entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Got a motion from Commissioner Wright, Secretary Commissioner Taylor, all in favor of I.